All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. Thank you so much for joining us today. The time is now 5:36 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the City Commission. As everyone is present, we have Commissioner Lopez on Zoom and the rest here on the dais. At this time, I'll ask for everyone to please rise as Commissioner Kinsley leads us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that will affect the community of Harlingen. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Now, the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mark?
Under state law, conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on the agenda item are the already known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time.
None.
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 Item 3C, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, mayor's announcements. Mayor, do you have anything to announce?
I do briefly. I want to take a moment to recognize Gabriel Gonzalez, our city manager who has been with the city of Harlingen for more than two decades and does an amazing job as our city manager. And I just wanted everyone here and everyone at home to just join in the celebration as here at the City Commission, we were notified today that he was awarded, and this is a award statewide, recognizing him as a TCMA member who has served in local government profession with dignity, honor, and integrity, and has demonstrated exceptional ethics while carrying out their duties in local government. So we want to give a round of applause to our city manager. He truly does an amazing job, and him at the helm of the organization really allows for the City Commission to do our role, which is to worry about policy and our role as a city government, knowing that Gabe is doing such an exceptional job. So we are very, very grateful for you. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just say thank you for those kind words. And two decades seems like a long time.
Actually, more.
You're right. Actually, that's because it is a long time. But I would like to just add that the greatest pleasure and the greatest honor of my life has been serving the citizens of Harlingen and the City Commission. And I love what I do deeply, and I can't see myself doing anything else. I love getting up in the mornings, coming to work, working with the great employees that we have, the great commissioners and mayor that we have. It's just been an honor and a privilege for me to do this. And so I want to thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
You know, we had recently, we recognized Chief Kestner because he retired after 35 years with the city of Harlingen, and it was a very, it's a beautiful ceremony even though it was really hot outside. But it was so nice to hear everyone talk all these great, wonderful things about Chief Kestner. But one of the things that stayed with me was everybody thanked his wife because, of course, you know, she served alongside of him. So I also want to thank Norma for allowing us to have you as city manager for such a long time. And I know it's a 24/7 job even when you're on vacation. And I know because we have those phone calls. So we also want to thank Norma for her service.
Well, thank you. She would appreciate that, Mayor.
Thank you. The other Norma.
Yes.
Item 3B, city manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to announce?
Yes. Our marathon is coming up, and it's scheduled for this weekend. So those of you that have not signed up, if the commissioner has approved something later tonight, you'll get a discount for $10. So go in tomorrow morning and sign up to do the full, the half, or the 5K. There's not a good one, not a bad one, just the right one to pick and pick one. That's all I have.
Okay. Item 3C, city commission member announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
A belated happy birthday to Commissioner Frank Morales, who finally turned, like Jack Benny, 39. And I will not ask for, will not ask for a show of hands on who knows who Jack Benny was.
Yeah, I remember him, buddy. I do.
Happy birthday, Frank.
Thank you.
Does he Martinez know who Frank Jack Benny was?
All right. Commissioner Lopez, do you have any announcements?
Is he there?
No. Commissioner?
Gabe, congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
I'm good.
Okay. Moving on to item four, proclamation, presentation of awards. Item 4A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Tonight, Amber is with us. Amber has actually been with the Harlingen Animal Shelter for over 100 days. So she's very loving, very friendly. She is a Chihuahua mix. She's about two years old, and she is looking for her forever home. She's trying to wait patiently, but she is getting very anxious. She wants to go to her forever home. Loki, who was here two weeks ago, did get adopted, so our streak still continues. But anybody who's interested in any of the animals at the Harlingen Animal Shelter is welcome to go by 1106 Markowski or give them a call at 956-216-5250. And Amber will be waiting to see them, along with all the other dogs and cats that are there.
You may have said this, but I was just paying attention to this beautiful puppy. Is she spayed?
She, has she been spayed yet? No, she hasn't been spayed yet, but she is on the list, so she will be done soon.
Okay. And then they can adopt her and still have the services, no charge? Is that correct?
Yes, that's part of the adoption, is to have her spayed. So the city pays for the spay.
And when they're 100 days or more, I think even sooner, there's a reduced rate? Is that correct?
If they're there over 15 days, the adoption fee is actually waived.
Okay.
So she is well past her 15 days. But so her adoption, her adoption fee has been waived. There are others at the shelter that their adoption fees have been waived as well. But it depends on that 15 day.
Okay. Fantastic. And is there any other events happening? I think you had one just recently. Did you have one this weekend?
We had a microchip clinic. We did 16 adoptions. They
Y'all went to PetSmart?
Well, they went to PetSmart. They've been to Market Days. They've been to Tractor Supply. We've had great success at all of our events. And we hope to be having a event coming up soon, towards the end of February. We are working towards a vaccine microchip clinic. So we are hoping for that towards the end of the month.
All right. Wonderful. Well, thank you for all you do. Hopefully, we continue with the streak, and she's adopted. And thank you, AJ. I've been seeing you all over social media, doing such a phenomenal job. Thank you. And looking forward to the next Pet of the Week.
All of the staff at the shelter, they're amazing. They have the biggest hearts ever caring for all these animals. And you can go in and talk to any one of them about any of the animals, and they will be happy to help you out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 4B, proclamation, Southwest Airlines 50th Year Anniversary.
Good evening, everyone. Our first proclamation is proclaiming five decades of exemplary service and dedication to Harlingen, and it is going to Southwest Airlines. Before I invite SWA Station Manager James Campbell to come up, I will read the proclamation as follows. Whereas Southwest Airlines began operations in 1971, initially serving the cities of Dallas, Houston, and San Antonio in the original Texas Triangle, and quickly earned a reputation for friendly, reliable, and affordable air travel. And whereas in 1975, Harlingen, Texas, became the first city outside of its original triangle to be served by Southwest Airlines, making a pivotal moment in the airline's expansion and securing a lasting connection between the city of Harlingen and Southwest Airlines. And whereas over the past 50 years, Southwest Airlines has been a vital partner in the growth and success of Harlingen, facilitating the movement of millions of passengers and contributing significantly to the economic development of the city and the greater Rio Grande Valley region. Whereas Southwest Airlines' commitment to Harlingen has enhanced the city's connectivity, providing residents and visitors with access to affordable and efficient air travel, and has made the Valley International Airport a key transportation hub for South Texas. And whereas the partnership between Harlingen and Southwest Airlines represents a shared history of innovation, perseverance, and community-focused values that continue to benefit both the airline and city. And whereas the Harlingen community on this, its 50th year, is forever grateful for what it means to have Southwest Airlines' love in our community. Whereas February 2025 marks the 50th anniversary of Southwest Airlines' inaugural service to Harlingen, an achievement worthy of recognition and celebration for its impact on the city's quality of life, tourism, and business opportunities. And whereas the city of Harlingen wishes to honor and express its gratitude to Southwest Airlines for five decades of exemplary service, partnership, and dedication to the Harlingen community. Now therefore I, Normosse Pulvila, Mayor of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the month of February 25 as Southwest Airlines Month in the city of Harlingen, and encourage all citizens to join in recognizing and celebrating this milestone in our city's history. Let us reflect on enduring relationship between Harlingen and Southwest Airlines, and look forward to many more years of collaboration and success. Mr. Campbell, if you'd like to come up.
I think they put you on the spot, right?
Just a little. Mayor, commissioners, thank you very much, and I look forward to another five decades.
Absolutely. Yes, it is. We do want to take a photo. And I don't know if Marv, if you want to say a few words, you're welcome. I don't want to put you on the spot either. But we are just, you know, we value our partnership with Southwest so much and all the incredible work Marv is doing at the airport. And we are always constantly saying how Harlingen has the best, we're not just saying it, we know it, that it is the best airport in the region. And that is in part due to our partnership with Southwest and having those affordable flights. I know that I fly Southwest pretty constantly, and we have friends that work at or have retired from Southwest also that are great people. And I know that every single time I fly into, that I fly Southwest and I get to the counter, all of those girls already know who I am, and they're just like so helpful. And it's not just me. It's all of the regulars that they have this connection and just a smile on their face, and it's absolutely amazing. And I know it's not just our airport, it's Southwest throughout the country. But Marv, I don't know if you had
You know, really, I didn't prepare any words. But I know that Harlingen being the fourth city, the first city out of the triangle, the fourth city, you know, that was amazing accomplishment. I think David Alex had a lot to do with that back in the day. And I can't thank him enough. And everyone else back then that had that vision of bringing Southwest Airlines here. I had the pleasure of meeting Herb Kelleher and also Colleen Barrett. They were good friends of mine and my wife's. And it's amazing. It was amazing company. It's still amazing company. And we're really, it's just amazing that we have them here in Harlingen. And we are, we're looking for a partnership to continue for the next 50 years as well. I might not be here the whole time, but
Me neither.
But it is amazing accomplishment to have an airline at your airport that long.
And we do have a celebration coming up, right?
We do have a celebration on the next Tuesday. It's 11th. It's going to be in the Valley International Airport lobby. So please come out and see it and witness it. It's going to be a heck of a
Awesome. All right. Can we get a photo with the proclamation? And will you join us?
So our next proclamation is going to Senator Morgan LaMantilla, honoring her. And I will read the proclamation as follows before I invite her up to say a few words. Whereas Senator Morgan LaMantilla has demonstrated exceptional dedication and commitment in serving the constituents of Senate District 27 and all Texans throughout her diligent efforts in the 88th legislative session. And whereas a member of the Senate Committees on Education, Health, and Human Services nominations and State Affairs, Senator LaMantilla actively engaged in sharpening, in shaping policy on some of the session's most pressing issues, ensuring that voices of South Texans and coastal bend residents were heard and represented. And whereas the steadfast determination Senator LaMantilla voted on nearly 600 bills within these committees tirelessly advocating for the hardworking families of her district at every stage of the legislative process. Senator LaMantilla successfully passed 31 bills into law and co-authored 99 bills, 54 of which were signed into law, demonstrating her bipartisan approach to governance and commitment to working across the aisle for the benefit of all Texans. And whereas the legislative achievements of Senator LaMantilla encompassed vital areas such as K through 12 and higher education, healthcare, childcare, intellectual and developmental disabilities, border security, flood infrastructure, scholarship funding, rural economic development, UIL official safety, criminal justice, charitable fundraising, contracting authority and protections, wildlife insurance, and state agency efficiency. And whereas Senator LaMantilla displayed exemplary attendance, casting 100% of 4,002 votes on the Senate floor, an achievement formerly recognized by the Secretary of the Senate. And whereas Senator LaMantilla attributes the success of her legislative session to the unwavering support of her dedicated team, esteemed colleagues, and trust and confidence of her constituents, expressing deep gratitude for their invaluable guidance and encouragement. Now therefore, be it resolved that we commend Senator LaMantilla for her outstanding contributions to the South Texas community, her commitment to public service, and her unwavering belief in the power of strong families and thriving businesses to create a better, brighter future for all. Senator, if you'd like to come up.
So let me just say thank you so much. This is such an honor to receive this recognition from the city of Harlingen. It means so much to me. You know, as the state senator, we got a lot done. But that was only because we worked together. And that was because of the constant communication that I had with you guys. Whenever there was an issue, whenever anything came up, or anything came up in session, if I had a question, I knew that I could text any one of y'all, and y'all would get back to me and let me know what your input was. Or if anything happened locally, you guys would reach out and let me know what I could do at the state level. And we did get a lot done because of that open communication, because of the hard work that y'all put into it. And just because we're not in the Senate anymore doesn't mean I can't still help and be a resource to each and every one of you. So if there's ever anything I can do So if there's ever anything I can do, continue that work and support your endeavors. Know that I'm a text or a phone call away, and now I've got a lot more time to help, so support me to work. But I just want to say thank you guys so much for being such an amazing city commission. I've worked with so many different cities, and you guys truly do work together. The achievements you guys have, the milestones like 50th anniversary, having Southwest here, that is amazing and unparalleled with other cities and other places throughout South Texas. And it's because of the dedication that each and every one of you have to this city and this community and the leadership that you guys provide. So I just want to say thank you so much for all of your help, for your support, for this recognition, and it could not have been done without you guys and without my team. I know we have Gracia Galvan and Ruben Bell here as well, who are now at UTRGV, so on to bigger and better things. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
So Senator, thank you so much for taking the time to be here with us today, and I just want to just commend you for everything that you've done for our community, and it started way before you were a senator, and you and your family have supported the city of Harlingen, South Texas, our region, and are definitely big cheerleaders for our community before, and I know you will continue to be, to do just that. But just, you know, having, being in my first term and experiencing my first session, and your staff helping us go navigate through those, through this first term, and opening your doors and answering your calls and texts at all hours of the day and night, and coming up with out-of-the-box solutions for just local issues too, not stuff that, not just the things that you could vote on or we could work together to present, but local issues that really just needed your insight, and you were always a phone call away, even on holidays, I want to say. So I just, I really, you know, I admire you, I think that you lead with such class and grace, and I know that, you know, there's much more to come in your future, and looking forward to working with you and collaborating on bigger and better projects. So thank you so much. And I will, I will say, I think you packed the room, because we don't generally have this, these many people here, so-- It's you, it's you, Senator. I don't know if anyone else has any words to say, if not, if we could have a photo.
Mayor, if I could just say briefly, Senator, thank you for everything that you did, and also thank you for your staff, because they are wonderful people, and it was a pleasure to work with them and you at the Senate, so thank you for everything, and hook 'em horns.
Next, we have Item 4D, Proclamation, American Society of Civil Engineers and Texas Society of Professional Engineers.
All right, so our next proclamation is honoring Engineers Week, and before I invite our city engineer, Luis Vargas, to come and say a few words, I will read the proclamation as follows. Whereas the National Society of Professional Engineers initiated Engineers Week in 1951 to highlight the important roles engineers play in making a difference in our world. And whereas the American Society of Civil Engineers and the Texas Society of Professional Engineers are dedicated to advancing the engineering profession through education, leadership, and public service. And whereas engineers play a vital role in designing, constructing, and maintaining the infrastructure that supports our communities, including roads, bridges, water systems, and buildings. And whereas engineers uphold the highest standards of professional integrity and ethics while contributing to the safety, resilience, and sustainability of our built environment. And whereas engineers in Texas and across the nation continue to develop innovative solutions that address critical challenges such as climate resilience, urban development, and transportation efficiency. And whereas the contributions of engineers enhance the quality of life for all residents, ensuring safe and sustainable infrastructure for future generations. And now therefore, I, Normosse Pulvila, the mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the week of February 16 through the 22nd of 2025 as Engineers Week. Luis?
I have another note of gratitude. Good afternoon, my name is Luis Vargas, I'm the city engineer. On behalf of the American Society of Civil Engineers, RGV Chapter, and the City's Engineering Department, we thank you, Mayor, city commissioners, and city staff, for this proclamation and the recognition of the critical role that engineers play in shaping our city and cities across the nation and the world. Engineers Week is a time to celebrate creativity, dedication, and problem-solving skills of engineers across all fields. It is also an opportunity to reflect on the progress we've made and the challenges that lie ahead. The Engineering Department is involved in virtually all infrastructure projects in the city. We assist Public Works, the Traffic Division, the Special Projects Department, Parks and Recreation, and Public Buildings. We produce in-house design for some of our public improvement projects for roadways, trails, drainage improvements, and public building projects. We also manage construction projects that are outsourced and ensure the city grows responsibly. As engineers, we're constantly striving to improve the world around us. Beyond technical achievements, engineers are also collaborators, mentors, and advocates for a better future. We are proud of the work we do and always strive to have a positive impact on communities and society. We are proud to say we engineer the way. I would like to extend my gratitude to my fellow engineers for your passion, resilience, and dedication. I also want to acknowledge the teachers, educators, and leaders who support and inspire the next generation of engineers. Your guidance is invaluable. As we move forward, let's continue to work together and inspire others to join us in this journey. Let this proclamation remind us of the power of engineering and the responsibility we have to make a positive impact in our world. Thank you again for this recognition and for your continued support of the engineering profession.
Thank you, Luis, we appreciate you so much and your professionalism and everything that you've been able to do for the city of Harlingen. I know you've been here probably just as long as I have, and we're doing this together, and your department and support staff is crucial to all the things that this commission wants to do, so we thank you. Thank you for, thank you for your help, thank you for your support and for your vision. And for the engineers that are in the room, we thank you as well. We'd love to take a picture with our proclamation, with Luis, and any other engineers that are here today. I see a few, so if you want to come on down.
Okay, moving on to Item 5, Citizen Communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. We had a total of four citizens sign up, Mayor, for public comments. We shall begin with Raymond Reyes. Mr. Reyes?
Long time no see, Mr. Reyes.
Commission, how are you, Mayor? I know, right? Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive, Gabe, again, congratulations on that achievement. I've known Gabe for a minute, he's a good guy, I have nothing bad to say. So as always, I think transparency and responsibility for the actions taken by the leaders that the citizens have elected is very important. We need to keep in mind that we want to do what's best for Harlingen at all times, not stray for the reasons one took office to make it a better place for everyone, not just a selected few. As many people know, I don't shy away from jumping into things that I think are wrong and are doing the wrong thing for the wrong reasons. Unfortunately, whether I want to or not, sometimes I get dragged into these things because I'm not too shy about stepping up, and sometimes I have suffered retaliation for that, but, you know, it's all in a day's work, as I say. I keep doing what I do. I just want to see Harlingen a better place, and I got five grandkids that are here, they planted roots, they're going to stay here. My son at some point has told me when he's done at JP Morgan and with his other business that he started, he's going to move back to Harlingen. So, I mean, we're going to be here for the long haul. I'll be here as long as God allows me to be, so I'm going to keep doing what I do. We need to keep in mind, as elected officials, we took an oath to do the best we can for the citizens of Harlingen, just like us who served in the military, took an oath to defend the rights of every citizen of the United States. And I myself take oaths very seriously. So as long as we keep doing the right things for the right reasons, everything shall pan out. So with that, I think I beat the buzzer, so I am out of here, I got people waiting for me, and my own buzzer's ringing, so go have a good day. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Jacques Royal.
How you doing? Jacques Royal, 19514 Real Ranch Road. I wanted to take this time real quick too, just to, again, make myself known, and then introduce myself to those who were not here at the last meeting. I went to Market Days first, you know, first time officially to go ahead and check out everything. I loved it, except for I didn't see representation across the board, which Harlingen I know is known for. Then I see the diversity that we talked about, you know, that, you know, we're trying to address and bring out. So with that, I wrote, you know, I go to film school, and in that I write scripts, but it also inspired me to write this right here. How much time do I have? Okay. It says, "The ground beneath my feet, Harlingen, Texas." Harlingen wasn't the place I thought it, and I ended up. It's not a city people associate with African-American culture, and if I had a dollar for every time someone asks me, "Why Harlingen?", I'd probably fund a small indie film. But places have, but places have layers. History is buried beneath shopping centers, highways, stories folded into the land itself. You just have to listen. Harlingen sits in Real Grand. Harlingen sits in Real Grand, in the Real Grand Valley, a place with a past that is tangled as the mystique trees that stretched their arms over the land. Before it became another American border town, before the ranches, cotton plantations, and the Spanish missions, the land belonged to the Cahuacahuas, and the, I'm probably messing up, the Cahuacan people, nomads, survivors, people who understood the land in ways we would never. Most of these stories were erased and swallowed whole by the history books that barely give them a footnote. Then came the Spanish and the Mexicans in Texas itself, man, switching hands like poker games, never truly belonging to those who lived on it. Harlingen took its name from a Dutch city, even though the people who built the foundation spoke Spanish. Railroads, farmers shaped it, and the culture here is deeply Mexican, even as a border town, even as the border tries to insist on a separation that doesn't truly exist. For me, being here feels like a mix of belonging and standing apart. There aren't many black folks in Harlingen, and their stories remind me of, and the stares remind me of that. Not hostility, just curiosity. The way that you look at a blues record in a mariachi shop. But I've learned that cultural differences, it's not about fitting the mold, it's about bringing something to the table. That's why I want to open up my soul food spot here, not just for the food, but for the stories, the conversations that bridges, that bridge, it could be, that bridges the gap between our communities and our understanding about one another. The ground beneath my feet has history, but history isn't just what's happened before, it's what we choose to add to it. And maybe, just maybe, I can leave a little of my own story here in Harlingen on the soul. So again, I wrote that inspired by it, because I have a couple of other projects that I will be shooting here in Harlingen. And again, as a normal mayor, we've, on three occasions prior to this, we talked about, you know, bringing Harlingen to the map as far as a place of diversity and cultural acceptance. So with that, that's my time. Hopefully I can get to you guys, all right?
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have Teresa Garcia.
Hello, Teresa Garcia, 5811 Sunrise Boulevard, here in Harlingen, Texas. I've been part of the Veterans Advisory Board, the VAB, since October of 2018, when I was still active duty. In August of 2022, Mayor, you made a meeting to call on all the boards to find out what the issues were with, issues of the concerns, why the boards were not being held, or what was not moving forward. And the main issue was not enough appointed personnel to some of the boards, or not enough people would show up to the meetings to have a quorum. We had both of those issues, especially post-COVID, but by April 2023, we had a full 12 board members. Unfortunately, one of our VAB members, Nate Belonsky, passed away, but Commissioner Morales did a kind gesture and appointed Nate's wife, widow, Ms. Donna Belonsky, to continue serving Nate's term on the VAB board. She was actively engaged and attended all of our meetings, along with any community events out in town. Eight or nine months later, right after New Year's 2024, she was visited by the VAG chairperson at that time, Don Ray Leonard, and Commissioner Morales to inform Ms. Donna that she was not going to be part of the VAB board anymore. I was the VAB secretary at that time, and when Ms. Donna informed me of this, I was very surprised, but more sad and-- very surprised, but more sad, and on the way her notification happened. I believe she was told on New Year's what it was to start the new year. I did confirmation from VAB chairperson that Ms. Donna had, and Don Ray had spoken, and that Ms. Donna's term was coming to an end sometime before January VAB meeting. It didn't make sense to replace Ms. Donna. We were, we were a full board, and she was actively engaged in participating in all our meetings, and she was one of the ones to be replaced. I was kind of like puzzled. It did shock me, but gracefully, Ms. Donna's replacement didn't happen throughout 2024. Perception is everything, and to me and me alone, it appears that some people may have an issue with a non-veteran serving on the Veterans Advisory Board. I only say this because before 2024 finished, Ms. Donna was again told that her appointment was coming to an end in January 2025, which was her last official meeting this year. Two months later into 2024, discussions and disagreements were happening more frequent between myself and the chairperson at that time, Don Ray. We weren't able to communicate professionally, and she took matters to a different level. She tried to remove and replace me as a VAB secretary during the March and April 2024 VAB meetings. I did reach out to her via phone and text before our March meeting, but she refused to talk to me and referred me to Mr. Oscar Garcia. I posted our March 2024 agenda at the City Hall as per city's guidelines, and she went and replaced it with her own version, where she actually posted under new business duties, dismissal, and new VAB secretary appointment. I didn't attend VAB's March meeting due to seasonal work conflict, but Don Ray still wanted to discuss her new business agenda item. But thankfully, some of my fellow VAB board members voted to table the whole VAB secretary thing for next month, since I was not even there to defend my case. April's 2024 meeting, top priority for chairperson, Don Ray, was to have new secretary election. Can I continue? The current VAB board members, we had just been elected in October 2023. Ms. Don Ray turning her resignation letter after April's meeting, I later found out that she had called several VAB board members to discuss my secretary role. What she told each member, I have no idea, but I know that was not part of the trainings that we had, the Open Trainings Act. We were not supposed to conduct or any of those conversations without being in the quorum or in the meeting. This is just one of the many advisory boards the city has. It doesn't involve money and focuses mostly on Harlingen veterans, but this was my first time ever experiencing this kind of rude and unacceptable behavior. Members serving in any boards should take in consideration the opinions of others, but mostly treat everyone with dignity and respect. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Desi Martinez.
Mr. Martinez, I think the item you were going to speak on is going to be withdrawn, but if you want to continue, you want to speak anyhow, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you. Desi Martinez, 1806 Haverford, here in Harlingen. First of all, I want to congratulate all the engineers, the senator, the airport, and Southwest Airlines for a great job. And I hope that we do more local hiring of our engineers, architects, and technical fields. Now, getting started with my three minutes, I'd like to focus on the public hearings and just give a brief of my support for our health industry. I'm an economist, and our health industry in one of these is on the, designating one of the hospitals, which we have two, and surgical centers and others, that designated for Texas Enterprises on program. Our industry here is $1.2 billion, according to the U.S. Department of Commerce Bureau of Economic Analysis, and it is a very important, any help they can get in these critical times of redevelopment of our economy after COVID, any industry. But I fully support that. But in that same terms, I also support that we focus from 13th Street to I-69 and the redevelopment, in particular downtown, that has a family income of $27,000. That's where we need other industries, and that's where Orlando needs to focus at HCDC, and it's not doing it. This assistance that we've gotten to date for downtown, for our commercial businesses, is great, no problem, but our downtown committee, our district, that taxes themselves as well, needs help with planning and development or redevelopment of that area, an industrial and commercial area, North Commerce, if I may, and along the South Commerce Street, not just the road improvements, Mayor, a 40, 50 million dollar project. We need to redevelop the whole area. We've done redevelopment 15 years ago, the west side of Harlingen on I-69 West, and it's booming. But in the inner city, we need more redevelopment assistance. They have money. They have $6 million a year. They gave TSDC 1.5 million. They bought land out there, the 400-some acres where Aerocapulis was a city back in 2001. We can't do better. I also support that. The second item, which is the 475, nine acres, which I think is east of the airport, and bringing it in annex to it, which belongs to the city, by the way, I think. It's in their tax roll. All in all, it's the economy that matters today. We're going to go through some real difficult times, and you can already see them happen in the last two weeks, so we have to buckle up our belts, hold on to our pocketbooks, our wallets, but focus, it's been some of our funds where it's needed most. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, that concludes our citizen communications. We'll move on to item six, approval of minutes, special meeting of December 11, 2024.
These other are going to be for the public hearing? The other two that are on here?
Do you want me to, or we're going to wait?
There are going to be a public?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It's on the item that's going to be withdrawn, but they wish you still.
I'll second.
They're in a public hearing.
All right, we were going to pull, weren't we, Gabe? Item A from.
But we do the minutes.
Got ahead of myself. Haven't had.
I made a motion, and I second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, now we move on to item seven, consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Mayor, we were going to recommend that we take 7A out of the consent.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I also wanted to take out M.
Correct. Second, Matt.
Gabe, if I may? Why do you want to remove 7A?
We need to just confirm a couple of things, that they are going to sign the CBA, and that they will let us know what project they want to pick. They haven't picked one yet.
So, we've removed A and M. Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
Motion.
Is there another one to remove?
No.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item M, consideration and possible action to approve a $10 discount for any of the following full, half, 5K, and relay races at the Harlingen Marathon with a one-time code administered for each increase, with each to increase the number of participants.
Want to go first, Daniel?
Yeah, I wanted to add first responders, which would be fire, law enforcement officers, and EMS personnel.
Great idea.
And what I wanted to add, because I think the whole point on the Harlingen Marathon is, you know, you want, you need to start them off when they're young, they're the runners. So, I was thinking about, and I know I had some of the sponsors from the, from the clubs at work asking me about it, so I was wondering if we could add HCISD students.
I do, if you're going to add the HCISD, I'm sorry, HCISD students, I think that, just out of a courtesy for the other students in the city, maybe including Idea also.
Oh, I'm fine with that, yeah.
And there's another school.
All students?
All students with student ID.
So, what does it cost?
Secondary students, so we don't get.
I don't know, but I don't want to do one and not.
I understand. What does it cost? Somebody walks up and says, "I want to run." What's the price?
Depends.
Yeah, it depends which one, which race you're signed up for. Do you know what the prices are offhand?
Edgar?
And the thing is, this is only covered for two days, for Thursday, or actually late tonight, it's approved, and then Thursday and Friday, because the race is on Saturday.
And Edgar's probably trying to see if we can raise some funds to cover the cost of the marathon.
Yeah, so it depends on which race you choose to run. So, the full marathon is $100, the half marathon is 85, and the 5K is 35. So, it just depends on which run.
So, on the students, you want to give them free entry?
No, no, not free entry, just, yeah, just a discount.
Oh, okay.
No, no, not free entry, just.
$10 off.
Yeah, the $10 off. So, like, I don't know if you want to include college, or you just want to keep it like secondary or elementary, or how did you?
Yeah, I mean, I respect whatever it is that you want to do for, I know that you're always advocating for the students, but if we're going to do for the school district, just make sure.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, yeah.
What about adding the mayor and commission?
Already there, but.
We're already here.
I've been telling the mayor, but she doesn't want to.
That's going to be a coupon none of us use.
And what date is this?
Saturday.
This weekend.
February 9.
Sunday, no?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Sunday, Sunday, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anything else from the commission?
Since we're on them, can we vote on it?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept with the adjustments.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item eight.
We have to go to 7A.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, yes, 7A. Okay, 7A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for a special use permit, SUP, to allow an unmanned battery storage facility in a light industry district located at 1335 Memphis Street, bearing a legal description of the east 6.604 acres out of Block 3, Paul Hill subdivision applicant Ravenwald, Inc., planning and development.
Motion to table?
Actually, no, sir, we, I just need to give you some more information on that. I did speak to Matt from the battery storage company, and he did say that they would be willing to do the $75,000 CBA. He wanted to see a list of projects that he could choose from, so we sent him a list of possible planning projects, and he just needs to choose which one he wants to approve. So, what I would recommend is that we approve the SUP subject to them completing the CBA and picking a project that he's willing to choose from. And I think Orlando was here, I was going to say a few words on his, on the company's behalf.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, I just want to mention that the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation is in support of this project. We have taken a look at the site, and it, over the years, has become challenging to attract a new user, as well as redevelop simply because of the access points to that location. We also believe that this new use will help bring in new property tax revenue for the city, and once it's complete, because it will generate little to no traffic, we think that it will also serve as a good buffer between the railroad, the active railroad lines, as well as the neighborhood immediately to the west of the property. So, I just wanted to let you know that we are in support of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Orlando.
And with that, the staff would recommend approval.
Just tell them that if they pick the Lozano Stage, we will name it after them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We're on 7A.
Yes, sir, 7A.
So, they skip somehow to M, I don't know.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Was there a second?
Motion carries, yes.
Yes.
I know, I haven't had any coffee today. All right, Melinda.
Item eight, staff reports and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the city commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item 8A, city manager's reports, or do you have any reports to?
No, I do not.
Okay. Item 8B, staff reports, we have the Harlingen Public Library.
Are we going to phone on something?
Power play. We didn't pull B.
Uh-oh.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. For the record, my name is Donna Campbell, and I'm the Harlingen Public Library Director. Tonight, I have the pleasure of sharing with you information about our library. I would like to start by. I'd like to start by reading our library mission statement. This is the cornerstone of everything that we do for our community. We exist to build bridges that strengthen the ties of our community. We create innovative pathways for people to connect with information and each other. Working together, the people of our community can experience infinite opportunities and growth. We are the bridge builders. We make ways where none exist. I'll start off by telling you a little bit about our staff and how we're, how we're broken down. We have five service desks, two self-checkout machines, and a library administration office with a total of 23 full and part-time staff members. In the, in the library administration office, it's where my office is, our assistant director's office, we have a library administrative assistant, too, and who is also the volunteer coordinator, and a support service assistant. The library administration office handles all of the meeting room rentals, they process the purchasing for the library, and perform other administrative functions, including in processing volunteers. The circulation department, this is the first desk that, that people see when they walk into the library. They create library accounts, check out materials, check in materials, answer basic service questions, and provide kind of that welcome-to-the-library experience. We have a circulation supervisor, a library associate, which is, the library associate is basically like an assistant supervisor, three full-time library assistants, and two part-time library assistants. Next up, we have our adult services and reference, reference desk. We have a downstairs reference desk, an upstairs reference desk, and they also manage our computer lab. The reference desk, they answer, you know, the more complicated questions if somebody is looking to, you know, figure out how to, how to find information for a school project, or if they're trying to figure out how to do, no offense, Mayor, a DIY divorce, we don't give out legal advice, but we give them the resources to. The, the reference desk is kind of the, the go-to place for just about anything. We've, we've been, we've answered movie times, we've answered football game times, we've, we've answered, you know, more detailed questions, but that's the kind of go-to for everything. So, so they manage the upstairs, downstairs reference desk, and then also the computer lab, and with the computer lab, they assist with things like printing. Sometimes people are a little bit less tech savvy, so they help them with some of the basic computer things, like how to get to different websites and that kind of thing. For the reference department, we have a full-time librarian, a library associate, and four full-time library assistants. The next, next department is our youth services department, and, you know, obviously, they handle the youth. The, the youth librarian does primarily from newborn up until about 12, and then the, the youth associate handles most of the teen programming. And then they also have a full-time library assistant who assists as needed and kind of bounces around between different programs. They all work together to ensure that all of our programming is covered, and some of the popular programs that we have include homeschool, social hour, Lego days, toddler storytimes, and family plays. Lego Days, toddler storytimes, and family place library workshops. The, the family place library workshops are part of, the library is, is considered a family place library. And so those workshops help, help parents identify early developmental issues. So they'll bring in different organizations to help parents help their kids develop and spot things that may need to get addressed early on. The next department we have is our technical services department. And technical services orders all of our materials. They handle the technical side of our databases, ebooks, and catalog. And then they also process the materials when they come in by putting RFID tags on them, making sure all the labels are correct, and making sure that they're entered into the catalog and then get onto the shelf. For our library collection, the library has over 100,000 books, Blu-rays, DVDs, and other materials. Last year, we had 141,229 checked items checked out. And some of the special items that we cover are steam bags, which those are, they're bags that have science, technology, engineering, and art-type materials. So steam is a big thing in school right, schools right now. So the bag includes a couple of books that are around a certain theme, and then toys and kind of interactive things that go with the theme. So those have become very popular, and they're kind of in a little backpack and grab-and-go so parents can, you know, do fun activities that help them learn without having to struggle with what may be appropriate for them. And then we also have Vox Books, which are kind of, they're read-along books. So there's a little MP3 player inside of it, and the kids can follow along as the, the story goes. And then we also have adventure bags, which again are, are in a backpack, and it's a, a group of five books that are, all follow the, kind of the same theme. And they become very popular with parents that, you know, they only have five minutes to run into the library, grab something and, and go. And for whatever reason, the kids love the little backpacks. So... For digital collection, we have 120,000 ebooks, e-audiobooks, and digital magazines. And last year, we had 23,971 digital materials checked out. This includes ebooks, e-audio, e-magazines, the Valley Morning Star Digital Archive, ABC Mouse, digital test prep materials, Reference Solution Business Research Database, and many, many more. Last month, we took on a new database called News Bank, which includes the full text digital version of the Valley Morning Star, the Brownsville Herald, and most of the Texas newspapers. So if you wanted to see the Houston Chronicle, the San Antonio Express, or the Austin Statesman, that's also included in News Bank. And then sometime within the next couple of weeks, we'll be rolling out a new digital service called Hoopla, which will include digital streaming or media streaming and audiobooks. Last year, we had over 90,000 people visit our library. We're open 58 hours a week, and we offered 1,169 teen, children, and adult programs with 16,961 people attending our events. So they're showing up. We have 60 computers for our public to use, and last year, 15,217 people used our computers. We, we would not be able to do what we do without support from our community, and we have a lot of community partners that help us with programming, help us with donations, and also help us, you know, be able to staff the service desk because, you know, we have five service desks alone and only 23 staff members open more than 50 hours a week. So we do rely on our, our community for support. Some of our community partners are United Way, AARP Tax Prep, Arroyo Colorado, Behavioral Health Solutions, Easter Seals, Frontera Quilts, Friends of the Library, Hispanic Genealogy Society, Nifty Knitters, RGV Nature, Master Naturalist, Sea Turtle, Inc., Tippa Texas Geneo, Genealog, Geneological Society, and Valley Byliners. And then, as you know, the Junior League of Harlingen also has assisted us greatly with donating funds for the renovation of previously our teen room, and then now our children's area. For our supplemental employees, we rely on, like I said, those partnerships with the Texas Workforce Commission's Summer Earn and Learn Program, the Workforce Solution Cameron County Youth Empowerment Services, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Program, the Harlingen Housing Authority, and college work-study programs from Southern Careers and TSTC. And also, AARP has a return-to-work program. I wanted to show you some pictures of where we've come, come from. If you see on the left, you'll see what the teen room was. And then on the right, the middle and the right, you'll see what the teen room became. So it went from a dark dingy corner to a bright, colorful, inviting place for our teens to hang out. For the computer lab, if you see on the left, this is what the computer lab looked like. And then on the right is what it currently looks like. So it's a lot more cohesive, a lot more updated. And we also actually have a classroom space to, to be able to teach programs now. When I first got to the library, the picture on the left, well, actually, the pictures on the left and the right are what I, what I took over. There was this pink vinyl wallpaper that had stains and was peeling in places. And one of the first projects we did was, we took the wallpaper off a little at a time and painted, painted the walls. And this was a project that, it took about two years because it's a big building, and we just did a little section at a time to make it more affordable for the city. And on the top left, you'll see some of the furniture that we had, the, the OG chairs. And we've added furniture over time to make it a little bit more inviting and more comfortable for people to, to hang out at the library. One of the big things that we've had to do is we've had to update our electrical and data quite a bit because how people used the library in the 90s when it was built is not how they use it now. Everybody has a device to plug in, everybody needs internet. And so that's been a really high priority for us, is to upgrade those systems to make it more usable for people. Another thing that we've added is the, the kiosk, kiosk at the park and the legal service kiosk. Some of the grants that we've received to make some of these changes happen, general donations from the Friends of the Library, Lizette Will, which is, it was, Margaret Lizette left us some money years and years and years ago that helped us supplement our collection. E-rate funding, the Junior League of Harlingen with the teen, teen room renovation, the Texas State Library, Library Services for Border Cities Grant, the Texas Treasures Grant, Texas Support Libraries, and again, the Junior League of Harlingen renovations for the children's area. And since 2016, we've taken in $1.2 million in donations and, and grants to help some of this.
I think we should clap.
So now's the part where I hit you up for money?
That's why we're clapping, Donna.
As, as I was saying earlier, we rely very heavily on outside resources to supplement our staff. And when their funding gets cut, we struggle to cover, cover all of the service desk. So we really do need two more full-time library assistants, and another full-time library associate would be great. Ideally, we'd also like to have a volunteer and outreach coordinator because we do rely so heavily on volunteers and working with community organizations. Some of our building needs. We need some new ceiling tiles. Ours are currently doing kind of wavy things throughout the library, and they're a little bit stained out. Most of the library is kind of dim, so we'd like to have some, some new LED light fixtures, and new carpeting are, is a high priority. The carpeting that we have now is, it's, it's seen better days. And you can tell where we've moved some of the, some of the furniture, like the shelving. There's like big pink streaks through the middle of the library because we've moved, moved some of the shelving. And then also, we've had complaints about our restrooms, especially the children's restroom, as it not being very family-friendly. So that's another thing that we, if we can, we'd like to update. And then public computers, we, we have 60 public computers, and we're kind of on a rotating cycle of replacing them, you know, about a quarter at a time. So this is something that I'm probably going to ask for every year, just to keep them up and running. But we do have some on the older end. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'll just say, at times, the police department is the most valuable building in the city. At times, the fire department buildings are the most important in the city. But always, the library is the most important building in this city. Because it shrinks the world and expands the mind. I thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job, Donna, and we know, we recognize the limited resources and see what the commission can do. I know that during the budget, we'll be focused on how we can help again in, in regards to the library. And I know Anna's probably around here, and we can look at what other grants we can leverage as well. We want you to be successful. I have a, a question, just out of curiosity. Those steam bags you mentioned, are those for what ages, or what...
Right, right now, they're for about elementary school age.
Okay.
If it's, if there's interest, we can look into a little bit older. But for now, they've been kind of focusing on anywhere from, you know, first and second grade to maybe fifth grade or so.
Okay, so the, the elementary. Just for my own nerdy note-taking. I don't know if anyone has questions for Donna? No? All right. Commissioner Lopez, no?
Yeah, quick question, just on the bathrooms. Aren't they going to be, the, the children's bathroom, the one you referenced earlier, isn't that one going to be renovated by and through the Junior League?
That, that is not part of the Junior League renovation.
Which children's bathroom, just so...
I'm sorry?
Which children's bathroom are you referring to?
It's the restroom, it's a, a family restroom in the children's area, but it has basically a little toddler toilet in it, and it's not too comfortable for moms with babies. And then it also has just a, a counter that's not very safe for changing. There's no way to strap the baby in or anything.
I think the Junior League had reached out to see if the city could participate and help with the, with the restroom because it wasn't included. I do remember those conversations.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much for the background.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, all right, thank you so much.
Moving on to item 9, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics.
All right. Okay, thank you, Melinda. So we're going to go through these really quick. I know that there are some people here for item C and wanted to speak in public hearing. We are going to be withdrawing that item, and so the commission will not consider that item. But I know that you've been sitting here patiently waiting, and if you still would like to speak, I'm going to give you the opportunity to do that. I'm just going to go through items A and B, and then you can choose whether you'd like to speak or if you'd like to wait to see if and when it comes on the agenda at, at a later time. Sorry for the confusion, that's what I was trying to, in, at the beginning during public comment, to see if, if y'all wanted to speak at that time. But I will give you the opportunity to speak if you, if you choose to, okay? So we'll start first with 9A, public hearing to participate in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program and nominate VHS Harlingen Hospital LLC 2101 Peace Street, Harlingen, Texas 785502. The officer of the governor as an enterprise project. At this time, we will open the public hearing. And Orlando, would you like to speak on this item?
Sure, I just would like to provide some background information, quick overview on the program itself. The applicant is actually Valley Baptist Hospital, who has requested from the city to be designated as a Texas Enterprise Zone project. And so part of this process involves having a public hearing to give the public an opportunity to provide input on this particular project. The Texas Enterprise Zone project is a state incentive to encourage private capital investment as well as the creation or retention of jobs in an economically distressed area. Should the state of Texas designate this project as, as a Texas Enterprise Zone project, then the company would be entitled to receive a rebate on the state's portion of the sales and use tax of equipment and/or services that are part of their investment. Valley Baptist Hospital is planning a $15 million investment over a five-year period to help enhance their facilities and bring in new equipment to improve the services that they provide at the hospital itself. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview on what, what the Texas enterprise program and project is. Later on in the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to actually approve the ordinance that will go to the governor's office for their consideration as part of the application.
Thank you, Orlando. I don't believe anyone else has signed up to speak on this item, so we'll close the public hearing on item 9A. 9B, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of a 479.25 acre tract of land out of survey 279 and all the existing right-of-way from the three-county roads adjacent to the subject property, also known as Bob Uker Street, from Rio Hondo Road to Woodall Avenue, Woodall Avenue from Bob Uker Street West, 764.44 feet, and the unnamed county right-of-way along the east side of subject property, located along the north side of Rio Hondo Road, approximately 8,540 feet east of Loop 499. And the applicant is the city of Harlingen, having no one here to speak for or against, or signed up. We will close the public hearing at this time. And as you heard, item 9C has been withdrawn, and there will be no public hearing. However, I am going to give an opportunity to those that have signed up and have waited to speak. And we will start first with Mr. Jeffrey Martin.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jeffrey Martin, I live at 6117 Hemplock Avenue, that's in the Woodland Oaks subdivision. I'm also one of the 15 property owners that signed a petition within the radius regarding the rezoning, and also one of the 160 owners that live in the Woodland Oaks subdivision that would have been affected by this rezoning. There are several reasons why we were opposed to this, as it has been withdrawn by the developer. We had a meeting with him on Saturday where more than half of the owners showed up and discussed, and he agreed to withdraw it. He, I guess, about to our wishes, I, I, I really thank him for that. I wanted to express my gratitude for him for, for allowing us to have that discussion. When he presented what he had planned to do, we presented the reasons why we were opposed to it, increase in traffic, the fact that the area would not be covered by the restrictive covenants of our subdivision, the possible effect that would have had on our property values. Again, not knowing full well what else he might have had planned for that area. He discussed a lot of different things, but not really anything that would have added value, I think, for the area. So anyway, in conclusion, I just wanted to thank the city planner's office for all the information that they provided, especially Ms. Hernandez, in helping us learn more about this project. And I want to thank everyone who was able to come tonight, and also everyone who wanted to come and were told that it had been removed and decided they didn't need to come. And again, I just wanted to make the city aware that we were opposed to that rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we have Jorge Mendoza. Mr. Mendoza? Nope. Hemplock Lane? All right. Okay. Having no one else signed up to speak for or against, well, we didn't have the public hearing. Sorry. Thank you so much for coming out, we appreciate you, this is how government works. This is how government works. We appreciate your input, and we value you and your perspective, and we thank you for joining us, and we hope you join us in future meetings as well. You're always welcome. Okay. At this time, I am gonna take things a little bit out of order, and we're gonna jump to item twelve, executive session, Melinda?
Okay. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, City Commission will not take any action in closed session. Item twelve A, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0171 (2) on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas conflicts with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, i.e., communication with legal counsel protected by the attorney-client communication privilege and attorney work product privilege, City Attorney.
Sir, motion to go in executive session?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. The time is now six fifty-six PM, and we will retire to executive session and be out shortly.
All right, the time is now seven twenty-two P M. And we are back from executive session. We did have item A, consideration and possible action on twelve A as discussed in executive session. We do not have any action on the executive session item. And so now we will move to item ten A, ten A, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending ordinance number twenty-ten dash thirty-seven to ensure full compliance with chapter twenty-three oh three of the Texas government code.
In ordinance of the city, council of the city of Harlingen, Texas reaffirming the city's participation in the Texas Enterprise Zone program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, chapter twenty-three oh three, Texas government code, confirming the designation of a liaison for communication with interested parties, providing available tax incentives and allowing for future nominations or of qualified businesses and enterprise projects to be approved by resolution if the nominee meets all the requirements as established by the act and any other applicable state law.
So moved.
Second. Couple of questions real quick. Where are the purchases of the equipment gonna happen or occur? I know I believe I read that they're from Fort Worth or Dallas? Is that where the equipment will be purchased?
I'm not exactly sure. I will defer to Nick LaCola. He is with the tax accounting firm of Ryan, who is assisting and representing the client on the application. See if he has any information.
Thank you for the introduction. My name is Nick LaCola, Mayor, Commissioners. I do not have an answer as far as where the equipment is going to be purchased from at this time. I do know that it will include remodeling of their facility. And if there are any additional questions on that, I can look it up, but I don't have the exact equipment location where they'll be coming from at this time.
Not that, you know, when you order on Amazon, you order from your house, which is in like the Harlingen. Is it gonna be ordered and purchased in Harlingen or is it gonna be purchased in Dallas?
It will be purchased for the Harlingen facility. So the purchases will be done from here.
Okay. And then part of, part of joining this program, we have a list of incentives that we did for a previous, which was addition network. Are there any other incentives that Valley Baptist is gonna be asking for?
So the incentives, no, no additional ones will be added, I believe. We will be following the same ordinance and none of the. Sorry, none of the incentives are actually binding. They're just best for the application of the application when the governor's office refuse it.
Okay. And then you talked about remodeling. Can you walk me through that?
Yeah, of course. I believe it will be part of their, what is it called? For, oh, I'm so sorry. I don't actually remember the parts that are gonna be remodeled, but that is part of the application on twelve, tab twelve of their project description. And I can get that to you if you'd like.
Yes, please. And then one other thing, in the letter, in the October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four letter, paragraph, second page, first full paragraph starts with VHS Harlingen. It talks about how it says VHS Harlingen will retain up to four hundred and ninety full-time jobs, but the sentence before that talks about that y'all have one thousand three hundred and forty-five employees and one thousand zero eight-seven are full-time jobs for the definition of this program, right? So you're saying that you're gonna retain four hundred and ninety jobs out of that one thousand eighty-seven jobs?
That is just for application purposes. They're gonna retain four hundred and ninety. You can get in benefit of five hundred jobs. So we wouldn't pursue any more than that, but it's not saying that the company would not have more retained jobs. It's just four hundred and ninety for the application and for benefit.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll, I vote in favor. I know you guys have already made the motion, but I vote in favor if there's no other questions.
I think we already had a motion. And then a second from, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're on B.
Item ten B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation of a four hundred and seventy-nine point twenty-five acre tract of land out of survey two-seventy-nine and all the existing right-of-way from the three county roads adjacent to the subject property, also known as Bob Yoker Street, from Rio Honda Road to Woodall Avenue, Woodall Avenue from Bob Yoker Street west seven hundred and sixty-four point forty-four feet and the unnamed county road away along the east side of the subject property located along the north side of Rio Honda Road approximately eight thousand five hundred and forty feet east of Loop four ninety-nine applicant planning and development.
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose, a four hundred and seventy-nine point twenty-five acre tract of land out of survey two-seventy-nine and all existing right-of-way from three county roads adjacent to the subject property, also known as Bob Yoker Street from Rio Honda Road to Woodall Avenue, Woodall Avenue from Bob Yoker Street west seven hundred and sixty-four forty-four feet and the unnamed county right-of-way along the east side of the subject property located along the north side of Rio Honda Road approximately eight thousand five hundred and forty feet east of Loop four ninety-nine, binding the land to all of the acts ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. C has been withdrawn.
Yes, ma'am.
Moving to D.
Consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for a rezoning request from Light Industry District to Plan Development District to allow thirty-two-feet-wide streets with a fifty-foot right-of-way and smaller lot sizes for a three hundred and ninety-three lot, single-family development on a property bearing illegal description for a seventy-three point sixty-nine acre tract of land, more or less out of and forming a part of blocks twenty-eight, thirty-six, and thirty-seven Palmetto subdivision located along the south side of Grimes Avenue approximately six thousand five hundred feet east of Loop four ninety-nine applicant Francisco Riega, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen rezoning from residential single-family R-one district, residential duplex R-two district for a six-point-nine-five-three acre tract of land out of the reserved lot of Stewart Place, section one, located at the northeast corner of Beckham and Queen and Sago Roads.
Read the wrong everyone.
Let's see.
You're in the wrong one.
We're on D.
Oh, you're on B?
D is Delta.
It's in David.
Delta, D.
Delta, Delta.
That's why it didn't match. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen rezoning from Light Industry L I District to Plan Development P D District to allow a thirty-foot-wide street with fifty-foot right-of-way and smaller lot sizes for a three hundred and ninety-three lot, single-family development and a property bearing illegal description of seventy-three point six-nine acre tract of land, more or less out of and forming part of blocks twenty-eight, thirty-six, and thirty-seven Palmetto subdivision located along the south side of Grimes Avenue, approximately six thousand five hundred feet east of Loop four ninety-nine, providing for publication and redating other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Mesmer, Mesmer second by Lopez.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion carries.
Item E, consideration and possible action to approve a variance to the city of Harlingen code of ordinances to allow a subdivision with two single-family residential lots to be without access to a public road for the proposed SME state subdivision bearing illegal description of ten point thirty-four acres out of blocks three and four, re-subdivision of blocks eighteen, nineteen, and twenty in survey twenty-eight, Briggs and Coleman subdivision located along the south side of Tobal Road approximately three thousand one hundred and fifteen feet west of Farm Road five oh seven applicant Chivey Consulting LLC, planning and development.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a variance to the lot frontage on a, on a public street for a proposed two-lot subdivision. This is a subject property. You can see it's located on the south side of Tobal Road, just west of FM five oh seven. As you can see, there's currently an existing single-family residential structure on the property. The only reason the applicant is subdividing the property is to allow a family member to build a house on the adjacent property. On the subject property, you can see there is, it doesn't have frontage on the street. There is canal right-of-way. Access to the property is from Tobal Road along a canal crossing, which the applicant paid for, constructed, constructed to his property on a private drive. This is the proposed.
So back to the map, please. So the white lines, the wiggly white lines, those are driveways and not roads?
Right, those are private, private drives, which they paid for, they paved those roads.
I got it.
And this is a proposed two-lot subdivision. This is a street view looking at the crossing, you know, to get into their property, which the applicant paid for. And this is a private drive leading to the property. The city engineer and the farm marshal reviewed the request and reported no objections. Staff has recommended approval and the P and Z Commission also recommend approval. I'll take any questions on the item.
Fantastic. Is there a motion?
Do you need to read the ordinance, right?
It's a variance.
All right, apologies.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve by Commissioner Kinsley, a second by Commissioner Bettis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item F, consideration and possible action to approve the evaluation committee's ranking of firms and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for associated engineering services pursuant to the city's request for qualifications number twenty-twenty-five dash zero-one for professional engineering services for the design and environmental permitting for the Arroyo Colorado hike and bike trail extension project phase three, Parks and Recreation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Commission. My name is Javier Mendez. For the record, the Parks and Rec Director. This request, we did go out for, request for qualifications. We did receive four proposals. We did receive four proposals. And the ranking tabulation is attached to your agenda. The evaluation committee consisting of Ana Hernandez, myself, Luis Vargas, and Robert Hernandez were the evaluation committee. And so based on the totals, Hanson Professional Services was ranked the highest. And staff is recommending that we move forward with the, with this firm and that we try and negotiate an agreement.
And where is this extension? Do you have a map?
Yes, so this extension is the one from McKelvey to Hugh Ramsey.
I'd like to point out that this is the same project that staff went out for about a year ago.
Yes, sir.
Or so. Techstat looked at the city's purchasing policies and determined that there was a missing piece that they wanted to see in it. Normally, when we go out for federal projects, we just include the federal guidelines in the RFQs. For some reason, Techstat wanted us to change our own policy to include whatever the instance was. I don't recall offhand what it was.
Okay.
So we had to go back and do the whole thing over again after we amended our policy.
So this goes through Parkwood?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is what I've said previously, and I'll say it in foreign languages for you to emphasize. This will involve eminent domain. You have to buy property from 22 people that will literally be in their backyards. They oppose it. I oppose it. I've stated this before. And so I will say no, hell no, nién, niét, and yoi. This is a negativo.
Okay, so just for the record, since we just, since this is a grant, and it's a planning grant, it's not for construction, we want to determine whether this trail is feasible through this portion of...
And how much do we have to pay?
Well, that's gonna be determined by the engineer. So what we're gonna do...
But you said there's a grant. How much do we have to pay? Is it a matching grant?
It's a matching grant of 25%.
Okay. I don't want to piss away the taxpayers' money on something. I repeat, no, no way, hell no.
Okay, now I'll make a motion to approve.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Where's the ranking? Because it's not in my packet. Do you have a copy of that, please?
Yes, sir.
And then this'll be a slippery slope.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
No, I just got the ranking right now.
Do you need a moment?
No, we'll proceed. I know how I'm gonna vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Ford?
Opposed.
Mayor?
I think that's...
It failed.
So it didn't pass.
All right, on to the next item.
Thank you, who voted no.
Item G, consideration and possible action on the proposal, proposal from Boy Scout Jesús Medrano, who will fund and construct improvements at Hugh Ramsey Nature Park and as part of his Eagle Scout project, Parks and Recreation.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. Again, for the record, my name is Javier Mendez. I'm the Parks and Rec Director. We had a request from Boy Scout Jesús Medrano. He is wanting to, of course, donate and as part of his Eagle Scout project, he wants to do a project at Hugh Ramsey Nature Park. And it's a crossing, it'll be a bridge crossing close to, there's a pavilion there, and there's a stream of water that goes from where it comes out of the pipe from the effluent that's provided to us by Harlingen Waterworks. And it goes down and it starts out to the wetlands. And so Mr. Medrano is here to present his project to you all. And we've already have presented this to the Parks Advisory Board, and they did recommend approval of the project.
Hello, my name is Jesús Medrano. I'm with Trip 25 from San Benito. I live here in Harlingen. I'm on my way to be an Eagle Scout, and I'm currently a life scout. And I want approval to be able to build this bridge over there at Hugh Ramsey Nature Park next to the dining pavilion. Sorry. As far as I know, it will be following the ADA regulations, but the dimensions may be subject to change.
I want to thank you very much, Mr. Medrano, for all the, for this project and for your journey on to become an Eagle Scout. Man, you guys are awesome. I think everything about your organization's fantastic. So congratulations and we wish you the best.
Thank you, sir.
I say bravo. Success in this project and success in your life.
I'm curious, what school do you go to?
I go to Harlingen Collegiate High.
Well, we're excited for you and excited for this project. We think you're amazing.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. We should have taken you a lot sooner. I'm so sorry you had to wait all this time. Thank you for your patience, and you're amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Medrano leaves, Gabe, can we ask or have Luis work with him on any designs just to make sure we have that ADA compliance?
Yes, we can do that.
Perfect.
All right. All right, moving on, Ms. Melinda.
And item H, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to proceed with the removal and disposal of 1,200 yards of contaminated class II soil...
We're passing on this.
Oh. This is the one we're passing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm apologies. Aye. It was my fault.
We're passing it.
Yes, sir.
Aye, consideration and possible action to over-hire two firefighters this calendar year, city manager.
The fire department's gonna be starting new academy, I believe, this month, chief. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so we have two positions that are going to be leaving us, two firefighters. One is gonna be leaving us two weeks after we start the academy, and the other one is gonna be leaving us three months after we start the academy. So we're asking for authorization to over-hire two firefighters, one for approximately a two-week period and one for approximately three months so that we can have a complete academy.
Motion to approve.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are these budgeted?
Yes. And the reason we have to get authorization is because when we hire these over two, we'll be over the allotted limit. But once they leave, then we'll be back to what is budgeted within our budget. And the chief can pay for the difference out of his own budget.
He what?
He can pay for the difference out of his budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 11, board appointments, specifically appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or bylaws.
Okay. At the last commission meeting, we did have some appointments, and they were tabled. Is there a motion to take them off the table?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we're gonna take these individually. We had a Scott Alex that was appointed by Commissioner Mike Mesmer for the Harlingen Water Works Board, and we have the application in front of you. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept Scott Alex to the water.
Is there a second?
Board.
Yeah, so there's a motion to, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have Jennifer Colton, and she also has her application here. It shows that it was cleared by City Secretary's Office, and this was for Commissioner Mike Mesmer for board, what?
Zoning Board of Adjustments.
Zoning Board of Adjustments, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's so, yeah.
Zoning Board of Adjustments.
It was so long ago, two weeks ago.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have Dawn R. Seeley Leonard, and this was by Commissioner Morales. The application is in front of you, being cleared by City Secretary's Office, and this was for an appointment to the Harlingen Water Works Commission. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? Having no second, the motion dies. Is there any other of these that are saying pending? There's two. Were these from the, are these from the previous meeting?
From the previous meeting, yes. We have Ms. Leandra Reese for Parks Advisory Board by Commissioner Perez.
So... Oh, I think that one already, that was already appointed. Vanessa Corubias, I think, was one that was from the last one. Was it tabled?
Yeah, because she was new.
Yes, she was tabled.
Okay. But I do see that you see pending documents?
Yes, we're still pending her self-certification form and her open meetings act.
Okay. But the, but the application has been cleared other than that?
The application is, yes.
So is there, and this was for the...
This was for the CBG.
CBG, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve Ms. Vanessa Corubias?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then I think these are the ones that were tabled, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so we have another one here, Ms...
Linda Gonzalez.
Linda Gonzalez.
Commissioner Lopez.
Commissioner Lopez. You won that. And it looked, we have the application before us. It looks like it has been...
This one's pending documents. We're pending her self-certification form and the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. But these are cleared, that they received the applications and reviewed. Okay. All right. And Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint her to the Parks and Rec Board.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And these are the applications we have before us. Is there any other appointments from the commission?
That's all we have.
None? Okay. All right. And that is it. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Nice job. Nice job. Thank you very much.